Ride your motorcycle today?
Yes, sir. Nice enough.
All right, it's nine twenty-five. Let's get started with our work session. So. You know, we've all had a lot of input since our meeting at Pekin. We haven't really talked about this for a long time. So you want to work on the ordinance or what do you want to start? Got your set plate?
You know. Can I say something?
Sure. It's work sessions.
If you go to Mount Pleasant on thirty-four, Henry County has these beautiful little no wind turbine signs.
I know.
I think they've done a moratorium.
Tell us about that. How does that work?
I mean, I just know that if it's a year moratorium on any developments for when.
For how long?
Pardon?
How, for how long?
A year, a year.
Oh, yeah.
I guess.
They give them, you think that's giving them, so they allows them some, some.
Breathing around.
Yeah, to develop an ordinance.
Yeah.
Perhaps, or maybe.
A precursor or something.
You know, they've got elections coming up. I'm not sure how much of it is politically motivated.
Yeah, I don't know either. I know that there's some disheaval among the community.
So. I had a process question. So we all know writing an ordinance takes forever. So if we decided in the next month or so what we wanted to be in the ordinance, how long would it actually take? Because my question goes back to the moratorium. Would it be processed better since they're kind of out? Working on leases if we wanted to put a moratorium on while we write the ordinance? Or is it better just to go forth with the ordinance?
Well, I could, I can't imagine that they want to execute any leases without the ordinance being in place. Not knowing exactly what's going, what it's going to entail because, you know, they. But I, you know, I, I'm not sure. I guess that's just my assumption. I think that the bigger problem would be enacting an ordinance and then trying to walk some of it back later on. Because I believe that some leases will probably be executed. Kind of a. But making those assumptions that that ordinance would stay in place and then if you tried to change it, I see how that would be difficult. Because of those.
That's a concern I have. On the other, on the flip side of that, we can, we, we. Development ordinance and we pass the ordinance and then we find out down the road. Or another board later on finds out down the road that, oh, boy, now we seen this. Now we want to go back in.
Right.
And. And we couldn't make a retroactive, obviously, but you know, want to go in and adjust it and, and the concern I have, that's why I, and. Elizabeth was right. A lot of stuff I said was, was already in there. Sorry. That's one of the reasons that I talked about. Having a, a, a minimum distance requirement and a multiplier. Because I think as these things, I think maybe potentially they'll get taller. They've already gotten two hundred feet taller than some of the ones that were initially put out. So if you have a multiplier. And I was thinking in terms of three, so three times the height. Then you don't have to back and readjust your, your ordinance to count, to, to compensate for that.
But we do have a multiplier. We have a multiplier. It's just one.
Yeah.
But, but maybe like the greater of, you know.
It's one times the height?
Right, well, I mean.
How does that work?
So it depends on what spec, type of structure you're talking about. So for neighboring dwelling units, it's two times the total height. That's the distance from which it has to be set back from that neighboring dwelling unit. And I have this in front of me. I didn't bring up, you know, others because I know I've printed out so many for you guys. I didn't. Know if you wanted them, but I do have the table here. If you guys want to discuss that.
Well, I've got some real concerns about we're going to tear in the roads because I've talked to. Several other counties that have had them. And they said they wish we did and I just tear up the roads. I've got concerns. I have more concerns than I have.
Well, I call it the Hask account because if you remember in the meeting we had.
Yeah, I know. I talked about three of them.
And it basically. The past history experience, let me put it that way. The people didn't want it and they didn't particularly have a dog in it, so they just shut it down.
So. I know you guys have talked to the counties, but have you talked, have you, has anybody told you they want it in this county?
No. I've just heard.
We're constantly being told that they had eighty-three hundred acres of lease land.
Not in this county. I finally got out of.
That's the question.
Okay, I've been asking Jared for months and last Monday I called him. I finally got him to say. Most of the lease land is in Wapaloa and Key Cut County. There's just a very little in here.
Five hundred and seventy-ish acres.
Abby's been very helpful because she's told me there's only less five seventy-eight recorded in leases.
That's just for one owner.
So we don't have a lot in Jefferson County and. I just, I'm all for renewable energy, but not in prime farm ground.
Well, I agree. I don't want to take, I don't want to take land out of production. I feel the same way about wind solar farms because they get so big. You know, you got eight, nine hundred acre farms and it's, and I realize in most cases it's, they're, they're put on. Or here in the past, they've been put on, not the greatest farm ground in the world, but you're still taking land out of production. Same thing when a city advances its, or not advances, but expands its, its.
Territorial area.
Right.
And there.
You start pouring concrete, we take land out of production. And, and that's land we'll never get back. So where I'm at on this, and Susie brought this up, well, first off. Again, the meeting we had up in Pekin, one of the folks up there made the comment about the half mile marker. Because of, of.
The hump farms.
Right.
Wait a second.
And so I was going to Mount Pleasant Friday for that, to do those job interviews. I tried to gauge a half mile between, between the mile markers and then looking at six hundred and fifty feet and I'm telling you, a half mile's not much. It really isn't. Now, I know it's problematic for them, or at least they say that it is. So I don't, I don't, I don't know. I'm not opposed to the moratorium. I just. I just want to make sure that we, whatever we ultimately pass. You know, we have into, I put fifty feet from the tip of the blade to the ground. I've seen it as much as sixty. I've seen thirty-five. I don't, we've got, I think, twelve feet in ours. I don't think that's. I don't think that's what having this heavy farm, big a farm equipment is necessarily. All I'm saying is, is, is that. If we want to move forward with this and, and allow them to come in, I still think that we need to make it. Relatively restrictive.
Right.
In terms of people that aren't on board with this.
Well, and I don't think we have a choice of allow or not allow, do we? It's, it's moratorium or writing a very strict ordinance.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And I've just, I think distances is the big deal, or decimals. We've got fifty decimals. Some of the ordinances that I've read, say, on the outside wall of a non-participating residence. Also, no more than thirty hours a year of flicker. Some of them.
It's my understanding that's not as much of an issue as previously because technology. Has improved and not only flickers when you're.
And here was another thing that came up in a conversation I had with a gentleman at McDonald's. Imagine that, Susie. That I had not thought of. Now, in his case, he does a lot of underground work, a lot of tiling and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
And he says, once these ground, or once this ground is leased, or there's pipelines or whatever, they're very difficult to work with to be able, to be able to do anything. The other thing he brought up, it never crossed my mind, and I've seen a lot more of this the last couple of years, is crop dusters. And I can see where, you know, these guys are kamikaze pilots anyway, flying under telephone lines and whatnot, but. Anyway. I'm fairly confident that. It doesn't sound like we're particularly enamored with it. I haven't heard from anybody that is. And the areas that where we went up to Pekin, I met with those folks up there.
And that was helpful.
Yeah, none of them seemed to be particularly excited, including the school at the time. Now, that may change since.
Where are we, where are we on distances? I know we talked one mile and two mile from cities. What do we settle on or have we?
While what's in the draft right now is one mile from incorporated cities. I had some people come into the office and speak with me about requesting that same distance of. For the Pekin Community School District in order to approve. Windmills within one mile distance of the Pekin Community School District. So I don't know if that's something that you also want to consider.
Does that mean the building or the district?
They didn't, weren't that specific.
So you wonder how many, how many, how many, what's the distance between Pekin and Menby?
I was going to say that was brought up at the meeting that they're not incorporated and would like that same consideration.
Yeah, I. Same with these pleasant plane, you know. Not that probably never does. I'd like to ask Julie and.
The lease is in Pekin School District. From what I understand, that is signed.
When you say school district, you mean within one mile of the building?
Is that the one?
It's not within one mile of the building, but they are in the district.
Are they in Jefferson County or Hin, Wapaloa?
No, they're in Wapaloa.
I was just going to ask Julie what she thought, or Joe. I just want their input while they're here.
And obviously, we wouldn't be able to do anything if it was out of the Jeff, out of Jefferson County.
Right, right.
They must have some in Jefferson County because it was recorded here as well.
Okay.
Well. I would be, I. For me personally, I would rather err on the side of being too far away. And maybe being able to adjust that later as opposed to being twelve hundred and fifty feet, for example.
They don't even marry them.
You know, I mean, these things are. We have to understand that if they're going to be putting them up. And then all of a sudden we change your, our line.
They're not going to take them down. If they put them up, they're back.
Right, exactly.
It changes the law after the fact. They're a grandmother.
Couldn't be retroactive.
Right. At twelve hundred and fifty feet, I mean, I'm.
That's a quarter mile.
It is, but I look, like I said, when I looked at the half mile, at six hundred and fifty. I mean, that's, that's not a tremendous amount of, it is for them and I get that. And, and evidently it's problematic enough that they don't move forward because they didn't move the Hask County. But that doesn't mean that in the future. That they won't develop some type of technology that allows them to do that.
Joe, do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah. Since that meeting at Pekin, I've talked to a few farmers up that way. He's kind of down nosing and. Two of them thought that we should follow the master matrix on livestock and be twenty-six forty away. And. If you do that, then, you know, I think people would be happy, but if you do that, there's going to be very few could be sighted up there and it would probably kill the project.
Right.
You got to look at both sides of it. And I've talked to. Some of them, okay, Jay fans, I've talked to a couple of them. They don't want them in their backyard. Imagine that. Electricity, they don't want it in their backyard.
Sure.
So. Which I find kind of curious because MIU was going to put one up by Cambridge. And it became a little bit problematic trying to run lines and everything, but they had to be at two hundred and eight feet because I think. They were going two-ten and that was too high for the airport at that location, I recall.
I'm concerned about is the birds. It kills a lot of birds.
No matter what they say, it does. Except I don't believe on the quail, they don't fly that high.
I know it breaks those tile lines and it's hard to get them back.
So I have a question, probably direct report Elizabeth. If they put a moratorium on for a year, does that stop them from advancing any or can they still go out and sign leases or?
I think you'd just be able to, I mean, you can't dictate whether or not they sign leases with landholders, but you know, you could put a moratorium on building any.
It's up to permitting process instead of county one issue permits for a year.
And we do have a permitting process in the ordinance, but you know. I don't know that we put a moratorium on permits when we don't have a permitting process, you know, unless we pass the ordinance.
So they go on ahead with the process, but they couldn't start building as well?
Well, I mean, yeah.
Okay, that's my question.
Didn't they say that they wouldn't have these up for four, five years?
Yeah.
I mean, it's going to be a while, right? I think, and maybe this is not a question that you really want to address, but the ultimate question, I think, is whether or not. You want to encourage them or allow them in the county or whether you don't want to have them in the county? Because there are certainly ways to draft the ordinance that would make it practically impossible for them to erect any right now anyway, unless, as. Lee suggested, the technology changes. So, I mean, I, again, I don't know if that's a question you even want to like. Ask and address, but that's really ultimately what it comes down to because Jared indicated as much that if you have certain setbacks like half mile, like. Practically speaking, that's just going to kill any, any wind turbines.
And that's theirs, but you've got to also plan for the future.
Wait, did you say you've had nobody come talk to you that is interested? Everybody's negative? Is everybody involved?
And the gentleman that I talked to at McDonald's, I specifically asked him. We were talking about something else and I said, I said, hey, I said, why are you here? I said, can I ask you a question? And he goes, yeah. I said, talk to me about wind turbines. Had no idea where he was one way or the other. I was just, I really wanted to know, you know, kind of the guy on the street sort of thing. I mean, I know who it is and I'm not going to get him. And he's been here for a long, long time and we go way back to our Babe Ruth days and as far as kids and stuff go and. He was not. As far as against him, but he was laying out reasons why he didn't think that it was a good idea.
Well, the reason I ask that question is because I'm a little bit surprised that people who are being approached about the possibility of having these on their grounds. Aren't coming here and advocating for that position because frankly, if I was in the offing for making a hundred thousand dollars based on leasing out ten acres of land every year. And the county was talking about basically curtailing me doing that, I would be here at every meeting pounding the table the opposite direction. So I'm a little bit surprised that there's not agitation from people that stand massively benefit from us.
Well, and again, he stands to benefit too, you know, like there's a term that would be generated from it and also kind of going back to a, a previous point. The, the, one of the main purposes of passing the taxing ordinance as we did is that it takes into consideration the land that's being used for them. As opposed to just focusing on the kilowatt hour. So if they are using, if, you know, like prime farm ground or whatever that's being utilized for these projects, like that's going to be reflected in the tax amount.
One of the things this gentleman that I talked to, of course, I, I, I knew this from conversations that we've all had. One of the things he says, do you know? When they tear those things down, he says they don't take or they don't tear everything out. Meaning, yeah, and I said, I know, we only go down about five feet. I don't know what that does to the land. I don't know what it does, Joe, to, or, or you, any of you doing tiling. I don't know how deep you go.
I've, I've, I've feedbacked. There's a lot of issues with tiling.
I'm talking about drainage tiles. Because they have to immediate, well, as our ordinance stands right now, any damage to tiling has to be immediately remedied, but.
Yeah, but has to be immediately remedied and remedied correctly are two different things.
And of course, I'm, I'm not, I mean, I know what tiling is. I know how it's put in, but. When you talk about doing it correctly or incorrectly, that's outside my.
Well, when you cut a tile, you put a trench across or whatever, you go back, you patch it, you put dirt under. You don't ever get that dirt back the way it was. It just keeps settling over here. Pretty soon you got a sag in here.
Right.
I've got some problems with that. You got to go back and repair.
When we put these sewers in these communities that we've done, there are a lot and lots and lots of settling and we'll have this completely mounded up and you think, well, I can't leave it like that. But eventually it, and then you're going back in and filling.
Well, I've got one property where real water cuts up in my field to go across one creek instead of two. And they cut some tile lines. Ten years later, I'd call and talk to them. They'd come and repair it yet after ten years. I mean, that was the agreement. So with water, I got along great, but with these guys, the time it changes hands three or four times.
Well, see, that's the other issue that we talked about up at Pekin. And I don't know that we talked about it enough. And it was a very good point. Well, you know.
The succession?
Huh?
The succession?
Well, yeah, if somebody buys, you know, somebody buys the other company and what's their incentive to follow the rules and so, and, and. The question I've got for Elizabeth and Chauncey, you know, these companies have these, don't misunderstand how this sounds, but they have these. These high dollar attorneys that could keep you tied up for a hundred years and cost you lots of money to try and fight them. Which is probably cheaper than trying to take the wind turbines down.
Well, I think what we do is we, I mean, we just factor that into the ordinance. Also, the ordinance itself would probably give a landowner like a leverage in civil, civil action against the. Manufacturer, the windmill people, right? You cost me a hundred thousand dollars damage to my, to my land through settling, through cutting tiles, what have you. The fact that this ordinance is there would give you further leverage in court, so.
Yeah, but lawyers can tie that up too and drag it on.
So my question is, I know what the answer's going to be, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Because Elizabeth loves my questions. You can just see it in her eyes. Can we charge a decommissioning fee upfront and put it in an escrow account?
Yes. I mean, we could, we could require, right now, what do we require? Some kind of bond? Let's see. No, identify the financial resources that will be available to pay for decommissioning and removal. I mean, we could. It shall provide a bond or other security acceptable to Jefferson County for an amount of at least a hundred and ten percent of the decommissioning cost. We can, we can change that, but that's what it is right now.
To change that, it'd have to be the decommissioning cost at the time of removal because we don't have any idea what it's going to be twenty or thirty years.
As specified in the decommissioning estimate within thirty days of approval of the application, but I mean. We wouldn't want to have a bond after the decommissioning. I mean, that, I mean, the, the purpose of having the bond is that we know that they have the funds available, but of course, we wouldn't be able to. I mean, it would just be an estimate, right? I mean, that's the problem.
Okay, so if we look through here, the pieces that we have that we can give some teeth to. Or the setback fee distances, which I know more than one of us has had feedback on, make it the same as the hog confinement.
So what I, what I wrote out that I sent to Elizabeth and I said, I'm thinking that our setbacks should have a multiplier as well as a hard number. Which we do, but I said, for example, that was just an example, a minimum of eighteen hundred feet. Or three times the height as defined from the blade tip at its highest point to the bottom of the base touching at ground level. Whichever is greater from a non-participating residence also included in that requirement would be livestock confinement, publicly owned parks and lakes, non-participating property lines. And cemeteries, schools, churches and any other entity, so I ain't not thought of. I put them in there. It's not legal language, right? But, and a one mile setback from corporate city limits unless expressed permission granted by the affected city. And then she goes, oh, that's not it.
Well, quite a bit of it. I mean, it's like we've got, I mean, it's just worded differently, right? We've got property lines, we've got other structures, we've got dwelling units and I think that there is some, some definitions that.
Right.
That includes schools and dwelling units or, you know, proper county right of ways, we've got public conservation lands. We don't have confinements, but I would consider that another structure. But if you want to, you know, more clearly elucidate that or add some additional language, then we can do that.
Yeah, we've got several people on Zoom and since this is a work session, I want to see if anybody has anything they want to say. Hey, people on Zoom or in the room, if you have anything you want to, information you want to tell us, now's a good time. It's a work session, so it's pretty informal.
I would point out one thing that even if they go down the five foot or whatever to clean up. If you've ever buried concrete on property, the earth is going to spit that out. So it may be five years, it may be ten years, it may be twenty years. But the earth is going to spit those footings out and from what I understand, they may be as far as thirty foot down in places.
I know Jared has said ten feet, that they go down ten.
Yeah.
But if they're going to get taller, they're going to get.
They're going to need, they're going to need more stability, but the earth will eventually spit those out, so. The five foot isn't going to cover for that.
Thank you. Anybody on Zoom have any comments?
I've got one more if nobody on Zoom. I talked to a gentleman up Packwood area and he is supposed to send me the phone number of a guy up around Grinnell, I believe. That has trouble with these GPS technology because there's some windmills in the area and he is very upset because. A lot of farmers don't have markers on their planters anymore. They rely on GPS. And he is very upset about it. I was going to make a trip up sometime and talk to this guy.
I wish I'd had those one who was. With wider chemicals on instead of those farmers.
You could always get more corn in a crooked row than a straight row. Remember that.
Okay, then I was really good.
So I haven't heard much positive on this. So again, back to process. You guys want to put a moratorium on this thing?
I'm for a moratorium. It gives us more time.
Do you want to write this strict? Do both? Which way do we want to head? Because it seems like we're starting to get to where we're.
Well, I, I, I want to be, whatever we ultimately, a moratorium, the time being is fine, gives us more time to develop. But, you know, one of the things I put in here was a fall zone of two times the height. Again, with the definition from any adjacent structure or public county right of way. And then also one and a half times the height, again, is defined from oil and natural gas pipelines, railroads, non-public right of way, overhead utility lines. You know, and these are things that Elizabeth has worked on and has put in there. I just. To me, the setbacks on the falls though are critical.
Right, and I like that doing the setbacks the same as all compliance, just because it's consistent.
I agree.
So that would be twenty-six hundred and forty feet.
And then if you, you know.
And I'm okay, but I want, I want us to, to define as much as we can that what falls. Within that twenty-six hundred and forty foot requirement.
Or doesn't fall in.
Or doesn't fall into, right. Well, see, you know, so like, for example, I've got here the, you know, it's, you know, a non-participating residence. But also included would be livestock, public owned parks, non-participating property lines and similar. And the reason I put that non-participating property lines in here was in another ordinance that I looked at. I don't know what that's got to do with the price of tea in China, but, you know. And that's, that's, you know, all I'm, that's, you know, you know, the main thing and, and I just. I'm, I'm trying to quantify six hundred, six hundred, six hundred and fifty feet.
And again.
And a half mile.
The six hundred and fifty feet is about equivalent to that Chilla Coffee Tower when you drive to Eddyville. That's how tall six hundred and fifty feet is, that guy that came to educate us.
And that's got, so that's got to have a pretty decent wing, wingspan on it. You know, I mean, it's going to be plenty visible from a half mile. And again, the question goes back to, and I don't feel like that I got a satisfactory answer. From Jared and, and, and I'll quantify that by saying, or qualify that by saying. He may not have known the answer and would have had to have researched it from one of his counterparts. But when I, and I use Joe as an example, so Susie gets it, D. But when I, and I use Joe as an example, so Susie gets it, Dee gets it and Joe's in the middle and he doesn't want the cable to cross his ground. How are we going to make that work? And he says, well, we'd have to go some other way.
And I think that's in here somewhere. Cause I know we talked about.
And we've asked for blank lease and haven't gotten one.
You won't get one.
He, he sent me parts of one that didn't relate.
And I suppose that the lease can vary, but it would have to be for property on the property or, I mean, but it would have to be a fairly, what's the word I'm looking for? Yeah, template.
Well, one of the things I'm concerned about is when that guy from Mid America and I talked to him. And I asked him, why, why is there so many wind turbines going out? And then the answer was because of the tax, the infrastructure act at the federal level. So that tells me all these companies are just going to try to do this, make some money.
Get on the bandwagon and then walk away.
And then walk away.
Right.
I mean, that's how traditionally this kind of.
Which was, like I say, was part of the conversation up at Pekin that night. What's the incentive for the company that comes in? You know, the one may agree to everything that we do and we think, okay, we got a partnership. And here's the thing. And it may get an applause. I don't know what, but, you know, I'll be seventy-two in July, so let's be realistic. I'm not going to be the one that has to deal with the decommissioning and so on and so forth, you know, at, at some point. So somebody else, a new board, whatever the case may be, is, is going to have to, you know, is going to have to deal with that.
It's very appropriate to think about these things because I think it's extremely common in the industry for the builder to not be the maintain, right? There are people that specialize in put these, there's also people that specialize in operating them. So almost certainly it won't be the same in thirty years, right?
Right.
So I just, I just, and I think the moratorium at this point, it gives us more time to, we don't rush into anything, but I, I am, and I don't know how you define that or how you, we don't have a crystal ball. So I don't know what that's going to look like fifteen years down the road.
Well, you know, I kind of agree with what Chauncey said, but it's the kids of you guys.
Yeah.
Where your grandkids are going to deal with this.
But I do think we have something that we can look at and say, okay, they went hog wild up at the Haskin County and areas. And now everybody's rethinking that, that process.
Well.
I just think a moratorium.
I talked to somebody that has a relative that has one on their farm for like eight or ten years and they said they wish they'd never put one home.
Yeah, I think, of course, and, and I wasn't trying to be flippant when we were up at Pekin. And I would say the same thing to Julie, you know, she lives up there. I don't, so I don't have a dog in the house. So the people that are affected by it are the ones that I've got to hear from because it's not going to affect me directly. Like it would affect Joe or, you know, Abby, or she lives up there, you know, she may have some in her back.
And, and right now, yes, that's a concern. However, we don't know what lies ahead for the rest of the county. So we need to think.
That's right.
For everybody. And do we want our county covered with windmills?
So, but we can't do a moratorium today.
No, no, this is a work session. We don't make any decisions. We're talking through the things.
And I would also make sure you put in there that if they do manage to get them put up, that you don't, they cannot put the graveyard anywhere in the county. If you've driven by one of their graveyards, oh my, you would never want a windmill ever if you've been by their graveyards. There's one up by Eldora and it's probably several hundred feet high by a hundred yards wide. And it's just stacked with turbines.
Well, hopefully we won't have turbines that we have to graveyard.
Well, you could put that in the ordinance that they can't be disposed of in this county.
Can we put something in there about foreign ownership? Because I know one of the concerns was foreign ownership.
So again, and I think that we talked about this, I guess my concern would be that it would be force disinterference with contract. If we were saying that landowners who have leased their land to, let's say they lease it to Apex and then Apex assigns those rights to somebody else and then we say that that's not possible. I just don't really understand how that works because they're not entering into leasing the county. They're entering into at least the private landowner.
So how about this? It's, it's not a sale, you know, the legislature recently passed. And I haven't read the bill. I've just seen the headlines about selling farm ground to China and not doing that. Would this qualify in that?
Dee, if they, I just had to think of this. So we can't sell something to China. But let's say you sell your farm to somebody from Australia and they sell to somebody from China. Sorry.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's a good question and I don't know how the, or how the law addresses that or if it does, so.
Well, and indirectly, that goes right back to the conversation we were having. What's the incentive? And Chauncey indicated about the putter uppers aren't necessarily the ones that operate it. And, and what's the incentive for the, you know, the people that put it up?
Right.
Yeah, we live up to this ordinance, not a big deal. People that operate it and then those people come in and take it down. I think there's going to be a lot of different components to this.
If I was buying putter uppers, windmills, I would have to allow, evaluate what the financial obligations that can be ordinance would have on that. So I mean, it's, it's not on us. This is on them.
It applies to everybody.
Right.
You know, no matter how, because again, we are not go entering into contracts with individual companies. We're just saying, if you have a commercial wind utility system in the county, these are the rules that you have to abide by.
You don't want to call it China, call it foreign ownership. It covered all.
And that's.
That's true.
Well, so right now, what we have is, I think it's a thousand dollars per application. And then you also, we have a hundred dollars. Oh, wait, no, that's going to be, okay, a thousand dollars per application plus the cost per proposed turbine to be set by the Board of Supervisors for resolution. So, so the way that is drafted now, you get to change the cost per turbine in addition to the application fee.
All right. Now I'm real concerned about road damage. So is there a way to like assess the companies selling every year just for road damage? Can we do that?
Probably. Yeah.
See, that's the other thing, Joe, Julie, well, you guys too. They're going to build roads out to, well, I keep, you know, I'm thinking.
I'm just messing with you.
They're going to build roads out to those turbines in the field.
Yeah, they do.
Okay, and the compaction on that, are you ever going to be able to farm that again?
Yeah.
You'll be able to farm it, but you won't raise the right crops. Years ago, they had the Farm Progress Show with Washington. They had some main roads out in fields. They still don't raise crops. They can tell exactly where them roads are on that flat.
Correct.
Which is what, forty years ago, probably?
I wasn't here this.
I might call down that road.
All right. So where do we want to go from here? We've kind of talked through a lot of different things.
I think, let's start with, next week's agenda, we put, discuss and consider a moratorium. And then from there.
Can we do that like May, first week in May, so we have time to get input?
Okay, I don't know. That's a good, I don't know.
It may have to be in the form of a resolution. I didn't.
If you're talking about doing a moratorium, I think you should get as much input from all the stakeholders as possible. I also would say that anything that would be blocking commerce would be done by resolution and not just by vote.
Well, we could put a term limit on it. Meaning that, you know, it's just giving us time to not rush into developing an ordinance that later on we find we didn't, there's a backdoor method.
Sounds like you're asking for a one-year moratorium.
Yeah.
Still think that should be a resolution.
Okay, that's fine. Because they're talking, what, they said, what, three to five years before they'd start?
Right, right.
But if I don't have something in place and they go, oh, the industry's changed, we've got to go full steam ahead and we don't have anything in place. And Elizabeth has done a tremendous job and we just keep muddying the waters for her. That's why she gets the big bucks, right? But I just, and then we put an ordinance in place, so we're not going to say they can't build.
We just need time to make sure we're doing it right.
Yeah. Cause I do think, and Elizabeth brought it up, yeah, obviously from a legal standpoint, but I do think we're going to learn from this if they start building them and find out that, boy, we should have done that or we should have done this.
That's why it needs to be.
We're not going to know until after the fact.
You know, and maybe by doing a moratorium, those people that aren't stepping up and going, well, I think about doing this. Maybe it'll make them step up a little bit. Cause we need to hear from everybody.
And I don't know why there's the resistance to showing us a lease, just a blank one.
He sent me something, but it wasn't anything, let me see what you gave it. It wasn't a lease. It was like.
I had the conversation with Jared out in public one day, the Jared Hirschberger. And I told him that they need, you need to see a copy of that lease. No way. I said, as far as I'm concerned, you just will consider it dead in the county if you can't show them what you're offering the farmer.
Yeah. I asked him one.
Yeah, he said, no way.
I asked him.
They're all different. I said, pass out the monetary part. They're all different.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to see the monetary part. We just want to see the fine print.
He said, no way.
Well, I said.
You know what that would do? The monetary part of it, he doesn't want the farmers comparing and contrasting.
Yep.
Money. I'm sure there are other terms and conditions that they negotiate between the parties that I just don't want out there because then everyone would say, well, I want that, you know, or I want this.
Yeah, if Joe's land is particularly valuable in their project, they may do a few more things with Joel than they would with Chauncey.
That's exactly right.
Joe might get the setback if you don't establish it for everybody.
Right.
Joe can negotiate the setback for himself or I can negotiate the setback for.
Yeah. I don't have a problem where I live. I live too close to the airports. I don't have champs around that.
Yeah.
I actually live fairly close to another airport that's on the map.
Yeah, well, you're lucky to live there.
See, what they did, what they sent me, they just cut parts out of the lease. Like there's one part here restoration of property, one expiration, a termination of the term tenant shall surrender and vacate property within sixty days, provided however that tenant shall have a license to enter onto the property for eighteen months, blah, blah, blah. I mean, I get up front of this. What they sent me is not like a lease.
Is the landowner locked in forever?
It's bits and pieces.
Whether it's for thirty years or something, I would imagine there is a.
I don't know. Pipeline's probably lifetime.
Yeah.
But I don't know on these.
Yeah, do they do pilot projects or anything? I was curious if it would be similar to like a solar panel or not if not, and I don't know if anyone has experience with those leases, but.
Tenant shall post any roads it constructs on property as private roads only for use by authorized personnel in connection with the one facilities. Landlord may use or cross or permit the use or crossing of such roads only to the extent such use or crossing does not interfere with tenants' operations pursuant to this lease or enjoyment of tenants'.
Happy roadies got to get into your own field.
Here by granted. Well, it said they can use it.
They will come out and make you move.
Landlord shall reimburse tenant for the cost to repair any damage to tenants' roads caused by landlord or those who use without permission. It's in really small print. That's why I'm sitting here.
The thing is, to get to the wind turbine, they got to go through your gate.
And it's going to be their private drive that you've got to be allowed to use.
I sent, I sent it to you, but it's just, it's taken a paragraph. It's, to me, that's why I didn't look at it in much detail. Cause it's kind of like, it's not worth it if you can't see the whole thing.
I don't know how much time we want to protect the land, the lessy here. I think the idea is to protect the community as a whole, right? Because these guys can negotiate whatever they want within their personal leases, right?
Yes.
The, the concerns I think that the board really needs to keep in mind are, are the things that we're talking about. Pollution, light pollution, sound pollution, deconstruction, things like that, right? Because honestly. Yeah, it's the public that's the concern. If it, if there's damage done to the land, well, that's kind of between the landholder and the, and the company, isn't it?
That's, that should be, yes, I agree.
So we developed a resolution. And you say May, you said May.
Yeah, I mean, is a couple of weeks or you want to go a month? I don't care. I just want to make sure people have time to give input to us. And it's going to be busy time for farmers, but we've kind of heard about, from a lot of them up there and we haven't heard anybody for it. So I think we know how the area feels.
And actually, I don't, I don't know whether Pekin School, we can reach out to that there, but I know that the superintendent, baby superintendent.
Has just not to, to go a mile or two away.
And.
And I think that's.
And I thought his point was well taken. He says, you know, little kids do tend to they don't pay attention to the teacher. Yeah, my son, that's all I did was look out the window and wish he was somewhere else besides where he was at.
So, yeah, what do you think? May sixth, May thirteenth? I don't care.
Let's see, May sixth, this is what's the date, the twenty second?
It's two weeks.
We've got two weeks. Is that okay for you, Elizabeth?
Yeah, that's good.
Can you draft a moratorium, please? Henry County probably has one sample.
I just got four.
There you go, Chauncey.
He's on it. Okay, anything else for now?
No, just, we want to tell her the length of time, between a year.
And again, this is all draft. It's not hard and fast because we haven't voted on anything. But it's a starting point. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, those online. If anybody has any questions or concerns, now's the time.
Sue is available twenty-four hours a day.
Take care. Bye.